Hafadeh, hafadeh and good morning. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. I'm sorry. Oh, there. That sounds better. Thank you. Audio. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, September 16, 2024. The time is about 9:04 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing was published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Monday, September 9, 2024, and Friday, September 13, 2024. Notice was also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying are asking you to please identify yourself for the record before speaking so that in the transcription, we will be able to record accurately who's speaking. Today's, we have two agenda items. They're both reappointments or appointments to serve as members of the Board of Medical Examiners. So first, we will hear the appointment of Jolene M. Ugin, M.D., Dr. Jolene Ugin, to serve as a member, physician representative of the Board of Medical Examiners for a term of four years from date of confirmation. We will also hear the reappointment of Nathaniel B. Berg, M.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners for a term of four years from date of confirmation. I'd like to welcome with me Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Thank you for being here with us this morning. I'd also like to welcome all of you who are here to present testimony in support of one, the nominees. I'm going to, before we ask for testimony, just read some of the parameters for the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. This is statutorily composed of seven members who nominated and appointed by the governor with advice and consent of the legislature. Six of the seven members shall be physicians licensed in Guam, shall be persons of recognized professional ability and integrity, and shall have practice in Guam for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment. All members shall be citizens or permanent residents of the United States who've resided in Guam for at least five consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment. One of the physician board members shall be the medical director of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. Otherwise, I'm sorry. The appointments shall be made so that three members of the board shall serve for two years and four members shall serve for a term of four years. This was to make it staggered terms in the, in the beginning so that we don't lose all the members at one time. Members of the board receive a stipend. It looks like $50 for a board meeting not to exceed $100 per month. The Guam Board of Medical Examiners is the licensing board for Guam. They promulgate rules and regs. They select and administer the licensing examinations, evaluate medical education and training of the applicants, they evaluate previous professional performance of the applicants, they issue or deny initial or endorsement licenses, approve or deny applications for license registration and renewal, receive, review and investigate complaints, receive, review and investigate reports received from law enforcement agencies, healthcare organizations, governmental agencies, insurers and other entities having information pertinent to the professional performance of licensees. They issue subpoenas, administer oaths, receive testimony and conduct hearings. They discipline licensees found in violation of the Medical Practice Act. They institute actions on their own, in its own name, the board, and enjoying violators of the Medical Practice Act. They establish appropriate fees and charges to include support of active and effective pursuit of its legal responsibilities. They reinstate revoked license at its discretion consistent with great assurances that the reinstatement of a license will not jeopardize the public. They develop and adopt a budget. They receive, review and investigate a peer review finding and action received from a healthcare organization pertinent to the professional performance of a licensee. Upon the receipt of an appeal of a peer review finding and action, the board reviews the peer review findings and action by a healthcare organization and has the authority to either uphold the peer review action and finding, refer the peer review action back to the initiating healthcare organization for further consideration or reconsideration, or the board can reverse, vacate or otherwise void the peer review action and findings. The board serves without liability, monetary or otherwise for damages arising against any current or former member, officer, administrator, staff member, committee member, examiner, representative, agent, employee, consultant, witness or any other person serving or having served the board as part of its operations. The board, a member of the board is subject to removal when he or she ceases to be qualified, is found guilty of a felony or an unlawful act involving moral perpetuity by a court of competent jurisdiction, is found guilty of malfeasance, misfeasance or nonfeasance in relation to his duties on the board or a court of competent jurisdiction, is found mentally incompetent by a court, fails to attend three successive board meetings without just cause as determined by the board, or is found in violation of the Physicians' Practice Act. All physician members of the board should hold full and unrestricted medical licenses in Guam, should be persons of recognized professional ability and integrity and should have resided in Guam. This is a repeat of the earlier statute, but it's repeated in the statute. The board's public member, who we are not confirming today, is not a licensed physician or provider of healthcare and shall have no substantial personal or financial interest in the practice of medicine or with any organization regulated by the board and is a resident of Guam. The board is authorized to appoint committees from its membership and employ an executive secretary or director and other staff, including adequate staff of investigators to effectively perform its duties under the act. It should also be assigned adequate legal counsel by the Office of the Attorney General and be authorized to employ private counsel or its own full-time attorney. Travel expenses and daily compensation should be paid for each board member's attendance in or out of Guam for education or training purposes directly related to board duties and approved by the board. All right. I just wanted to give the public an idea of what the board does in, in addition to simply licensing applicants to be members of the Guam medical physicians on Guam. So I'd also like to recognize before we begin this morning, Senator Chris Barnett. Thank you, Senator, for joining us today. All right. So we'll begin with the appointment of Dr. Jolene Ugin. We will hear first from those who are here to testify in her support, and then we will hear from the nominee herself. But the nominee, Dr. Jolene, you may have a seat in the middle if you don't mind. And, and those who are here to give oral testimony in support of Dr. Jolene, you can have a seat at this table as well. All right. First, I have Sorry, I can't read the right. Joseph Taitauta? Atkins Alexandra? You may proceed. State your name and if you're representing any organization.
Press the talk. Okay. Hi, good morning. My name's Alexandra Atkins, and I am here to support Dr. Jolene's Ugin's appointment to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Hafadeh, Speaker Terlahe and members of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Alexandra Atkins. I am a clinical pharmacist at the intensive care unit at GMHA, and I am submitting my testimony today in support of Dr. Jolene Ugin's appointment to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I met Dr. Ugin in 2015 at her first day on the job at GMHA as our new ICU intensivist, and we have worked together as part of the ICU team at GMH since. In the nine years I have known her and worked beside her, I can attest to her dedication to quality and safe patient care, her compassion for her patients and their families, her willingness to share her clinical expertise and her mission to advance medical care on Guam. Dr. Ugin has served our island in numerous roles with the intention of improving medical care on Guam. As an intensivist at GMH and our ICU director, since her arrival, her efforts including establishing processes to standardize patient care through evidence-based practices, promote multidisciplinary efforts to provide comprehensive patient care, encourage staff development and education in addition to providing excellent bedside care. She answered the call to lead our island and GMH during the COVID-19 pandemic, where she led the clinical emergency preparedness team, a multidisciplinary task force that developed protocols and streamlined patient care during the pandemic. She has also served in various administrative leadership roles where her focus remained on patient safety and quality care, quality initiatives and process improvements. Dr. Ugin leads with compassion and respect, fairness and accountability. She is a woman of integrity and is widely respected for her leadership, her passion to improve healthcare and her dedication to her patients and the people of Guam. I wholeheartedly support without reservation the appointment of Dr. Jolene Ugin to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Dr. Ugin is a dedicated physician and an exceptional human being, and I am certain that there is no one more deserving of the honor to serve her island in this capacity. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to submit this testimony in support of her nomination.
Sizou Smasi. Deputy Director Peter John Camacho.
My name is Sizou Smasi, Madam Speaker, Madam Vice Speaker and Senator Barnes. My name is Peter John Camacho. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I'm here on behalf or to present testimony on behalf of our Director Teresa C. Ariola. Hafadeh Chairwoman Terlahe, Committee Members and Members of the Guam Legislature. My name is Teresa C. Ariola, Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. This testimony is in support of the appointment of Dr. Jolene Ugin to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Dr. Ugin has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to Guam's medical field, serving as both a pulmonologist and a critical care physician. Her expertise and dedication were invaluable, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic, when her skills were in greatest demand. During the early stages of the pandemic, COVID-19 posed an unprecedented threat, especially to respiratory health, which made Dr. Ugin's role crucial in the fight to protect our community. During the early stages of the pandemic, when much about the virus was still unknown, Dr. Ugin stepped forward and provided the critical care necessary to give our people a fighting chance against this devastating disease. Her leadership in treating patients with respiratory complications, combined with her dedication to the well-being of the island, underscores her qualifications for this appointment. Dr. Ugin is a tremendous asset to our island's healthcare system, and I am confident she will continue to serve with the same commitment and excellence in her role on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. On a personal note, when I first met Dr. Ugin, she was young and she was very committed to medical care, critical care at the hospital. And what was so exciting was her desire to pass on that message to her staff so they could, they improve their skills and the care of the patients. And that, I thought, was extremely important because they're busy taking care of patients, and yet she took that time, that precious time, to share that knowledge with her staff. So I too respectfully request the confirmation of Dr. Jolene Ugin to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Thank you.
Sizou Smasi, Deputy Director. And please extend her. Thanks to the Director as well. Is this Jen? Seno? I'm sorry. I can't read it, but you may proceed, ma'am. Please identify yourself and if you're representing any organization.
Good morning, Senator and members of the 37th Guam Legislature. My name is Denise Ugin. I am the sister of Dr. Jolene Ugin. It is with great pride and extreme admiration that I am able to provide this testimony for my sister, Dr. Jolene Ugin, to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Dr. Ugin is not only an accomplished physician, but also a proud daughter of Guam, born and raised on our island. Her love for our people and community has been the guiding force throughout her distinguished career in medicine. Her journey into pulmonary and critical care was sparked by a personal experience when our grandmother passed away due to the lack of specialized care available on the island. Since then, my sister made it her mission to ensure that no family in Guam would have to face such a loss without proper medical expertise. Today, she stands as a specialist our island's once lacked, saving lives and bringing vital care to those in need. Dr. Ugin currently serves as the ICU chief and an associate administrator of the Guam Memorial Hospital. In her leadership roles, she has made an indelible impact, particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic. She led Guam's critical care response tirelessly working to save countless lives, coordinating care and implementing life-saving protocols. Throughout the pandemic, her calm and decisive leadership under extreme pressure was a beacon of hope for our island. During this time, she made personal sacrifices, choosing to distance herself from our family to include her own two young sons to ensure their safety while she cared for the community. Her selflessness and dedication are a testament to her unwavering commitment to protecting our people, our community and our island, even when it meant being apart from the people she loves most. In addition to her clinical work, my sister is a passionate advocate for patient safety. As the ICU chief, she has taken the time to personally train and mentor her nursing staff, ensuring that the entire team is equipped with the skills necessary to develop the highest standard of care. Her emphasis on safety, continuous learning and teamwork has cultivated a culture of excellence in critical care, where every patient is treated with the utmost care and respect. Her contributions extend beyond patient care. As a former chief medical officer, Dr. Ugin has developed and implemented hospital policies and practices that continue to enhance patient outcomes. Her leadership, vision and relentless advocacy for the people of Guam have transformed healthcare for the island, always with the goal of improving access and quality of care for all. Dr. Ugin's love for our island and her commitment to its future are unmatched. Her ability to lead with compassion, expertise and an unbreakable dedication to her community makes her an ideal candidate as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I have no doubt that she will continue to be an extraordinary asset, helping to guide the future of healthcare on our island. It is with great honor and utmost confidence that I provide this testimony for Dr. Ugin in this role. Her sacrifices, expertise and profound love for our island's people will undoubtedly make a lasting impact. Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ugin. Doctor?
Thank you. My name's John Sidell. I'm Chief Medical Officer of GMH. In that capacity, I also, as you mentioned earlier, Senator, sit on the Guam Medical Board. I want to thank you for allowing me to testify. I know your time is important, and I'll try to use it efficiently. I've been chief medical officer before. I've been president a couple of times, not, not because I'm special, but if you've been around long enough, they, they stick you in these positions. And as I was driving down here, I thought to myself, I feel good about this. Many times when, when I come in front of legislature, I always have bad news. We need money. And no one likes to be the bearer of bad news. But this time, I bring you good news. We have the opportunity to get Jolene Ugin on the medical board. Everyone knows Jolene's a great doctor, but I, I don't know if everyone knows her commitment to the island of Guam. I've seen it firsthand, and I, like Peter John, who've been around a long time, had the chance to work with the legends, Olivia Cruz, Eduardo Cruz. And I got to tell you, Jolene has that same thing that those two people had, just an unwavering, rock-solid commitment to the people of Guam. And it's not difficult being a female physician, especially in leadership roles. If you're too soft, doctors will walk all over you. They're smart and they're tough. If you're a little bit too hard, you get called names and you're said you're too, too aggressive. The beauty of Jolene is she walks that fine line where when the situation calls for compassion, she can be compassionate. When it comes to doing good medicine and protecting the people of Guam, she's rock solid. I give her my highest recommendation, and I'm very proud to speak on her behalf today, Senators. Thank you.
Sizou Smasi, Dr. Sidell. I'd also like to recognize my colleague and Vice Chair of the Committee of Health is Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on behalf of Dr. Ugin? If not, before Dr. Ugin testifies, I just want to read out the list of people who've also submitted written testimony. Dr. Thomas K. Murray, M.D., FACP. Dr. Russell J. Abin, D.O., Anesthesiologist, GMH. Jennifer Chang, M.D., FACP, CSWP, GMH. Assistant Fire Chief Joseph Taitauta. Dr. Marson Wilhelm Surnia Kao, M.D., GMH. Dr. Brenda Ringer Raju, M.D., Internal Medicine, GMH. Dr. Mariana Cook Hun, M.D., DABFM, MPH. Joseph Gogo. Elizabeth M. Ada, Family Member, Local Business Owner, Winward Hills Village Store, formerly known as Mini Kamachili Trees Store. Dr. Paul Alfred Munya Ugin, Gastroenterology, Advanced Endoscopy. I believe he's also at GMH. Dahlia O. Sapalo. Carl Mui Elpin. Dr. Thorp, he's already testified. No. Dr. Jonathan Thorp, M.D., MBA, FACP, DIP, ABLM. He's the medical director at Guam Seventh Day Adventist. Ida Yap. Ida Correl Yap, BSN, RN, NIBC, MSNBC, Acting Hospital Unit Supervisor, Informatics, Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. Garrett W. Britton, D.O., Major, MCUS Army Reserve, IM Critical Care Telemedicine. Angelina Stokio, Pharm D, BCPS, Dr. Stokio. And Dr. Atkins, who's testified already. Sizou Smasi. All right. So now I hear from the nominee herself. Dr. Ugin.
Honorable Speaker Terlahe. Honorable Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Honorable Senators of the 37th Guam Legislature. Buenas tardes. Thank you for the opportunity to submit my testimony in support of my appointment to the Guam Medical Board of Examiners. I am honored to be considered for this position. I appreciate the chance to share my background and commitment to the healthcare on Guam. In my multiple leadership roles at Guam Memorial Hospital Authority over the years, I have worked on several initiatives to improve patient care and healthcare access. As a pulmonary and critical care physician, the administrator of clinical services, the assistant administrator of medical services and the administrator of medical services, also known as the chief medical officer. Currently, as the medical director of specialty services for the outpatient clinics, my focus has been on process improvement, creating more efficient systems to streamline operations, enhance service delivery and ensure sustainability for the hospital's outpatient services. Additionally, I am collaborating with the Department of Public Health under Director Teresa Ariola to increase access to healthcare for our community. Together, we are working to expand the availability of services, ensuring that patients across Guam access, have access to the care that they need. During the COVID-19 pandemic, I served as the medical director for Guam Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services and Guam Memorial Hospital, where I led the development of the clinical emergency preparedness team. This team created and implemented numerous protocols aimed at keeping our staff safe while ensuring that we delivered safe care to our patients using the latest medical developments. I also played a key role in developing GMHA's telemedicine program, which was instrumental in providing patient care during the crisis and continues to expand access to healthcare on the island. In my other roles, including overseeing pulmonary service and the ICU at GMH, I have contributed to decreasing hospitalizations, improving the standard of care within the hospital, implementing safety protocols and improving patient outcomes. These experiences have strengthened my commitment to continuously advancing the quality of healthcare on Guam. As a candidate for the Guam Medical Board of Examiners, I am dedicated to upholding the highest standards of care and ethical practice. I am grateful for your consideration and look forward to the opportunity to serve and contribute to the continued improvement of healthcare on our island. Sizou Smasi, thank you for your time and consideration.
Sizou Smasi, Dr. Ugin. I want to thank you also for I want to thank you also for being willing to accept this appointment and nomination. And thanks to all of you who've taken the time to come and testify on her behalf, and those who submitted the written testimony, of course, your family members who are here. Thank you for being here. Of course, I have no doubt about your commitment to Guam and medical services on Guam and increasing access. So I think you will be an excellent person to be on this board. Do you think that you serve many roles, as you've outlined, even leadership roles, in addition to practicing medicine and being the ICU leader, pretty much, and expanding GMH's programs to telemedicine, many things? Are you able to do this additional role? This is a lot of work if we're going to get those complaints that are cleared up. Turn the mic on, please.
I think that's a very fair question. I did sit on the Guam Medical Board of Examiners as a chief medical officer during the pandemic. So I do understand the responsibilities that we're faced with when sitting on the GBME. I think that the biggest thing for me is finding balance. I know that the meetings are once a month and that we need to put some time in to work on the investigations when physicians are confronted, you know, with patient safety issues. And I'm a big advocate for patient safety, whether it's within our hospital or within our community, and I have no problems trying to find the time to help the community meet that need so that we can work together to improve our public's safety. You know, the reason why I put so much time and effort into Guam Memorial Hospital is not because I'm serving the hospital, it's because I'm serving the community.
Do you believe there are improvements that can be made to the way the board handles
I'm sure that there are improvements in the way that many of the processes are carried out, and not just the board. I'm sure that, you know, I would look into these processes and see how I could use my leadership skills to help improve those processes. So I'm not just a physician that's being placed in a leadership role. I've taken it upon myself to do leadership certificates with Harvard Medical, Safety, Quality, Informatics, and Leadership. And I'm currently completing my chief medical officer certificate with Emory University's Gozweta Business School. And I do that on the weekends, and I'm just about ready to complete it. But change initiative, lean leadership, you know, decreasing waste, trying to improve efficiency, those are my top priorities.
All right. And you work with all the doctors on Guam, pretty much, I would think, in all those different capacities. Do you think you would have a problem investigating them or making sure that patients find justice in what they claim to be malpractice?
I think that, I think my colleagues can attest to this, that I will have absolutely no problem holding myself and my colleagues accountable.
All right. Do you have any business interests that might conflict with your duties on the board?
I am an independent contractor as a physician for Guam Memorial Hospital. I am the CEO and president of Mariana's Medical Specialist Group that has been established since I was a physician on Guam, since 2015.
All right. So you have professional relationships kind of embedded with your practice. You also, I know the doctors, you have to, we have different specialties that you have to work together with?
Correct.
And referrals back and forth, I guess, that type of relationship. How would you do that, then, to investigate a complaint made against one of your close colleagues?
So I already do that as a leader of GMH. We have, I think, I want to say about 100, 100 medical staff members. And so as a leader at GMH, we fill those complaints all the time. So this is not anything different from what we would be doing as leaders within the hospital over physicians.
Are you aware of the complaints against the board for taking too long or not?
I am.
Not fully investigating certain complaints?
I am.
All right. Do you believe you can bring justice to those?
I believe that I can work closely with Dr. Berg, the chair and president of the GBME, and the members of the board to try and improve the process. Absolutely.
Thank you. On to the vice speaker.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sisus. To each and every one of you here this morning, thank you for having me, Madam Speaker, to be here at this public hearing. I made it especially to come here this morning. I will disclose my relationship to the appointee, as she is my niece and next-door neighbor who lives right on top of me. But for the record, Madam Speaker, I want to say with your expertise and your effective administration skills, the awards that have been given to you, from Seruptemus to the private community, to Harvard, to your expertise when we were dealing with the worldwide pandemic, I want to say that with the work that we have done from just finding and creating new ideas to see how we can work our island, work for our island, I want to say, for coming home. For coming home as one of the, if not the only, pulmonologist here and bringing the specialty to our community, that for me shows a great impact on how you love your island, how you love your people, how you love your family. And even during the pandemic, when we were working closely together, when I was the speaker, the work and the amount that you did to be able to take, try and take care of everybody that came through the doors of the hospital was greatly admirable, and I want to say thank you for that. Madam Speaker, I will support this appointee, not just because she's my niece, but more importantly, because the opportunity to come home and give back, having your roots here, getting educated here, then going off, working, and knowing that you can get quadrupled the amount that you're getting here on Guam, I want to say thank you. You've made it important, and you've given the opportunity for others in the specialty of physician work to give them that opportunity to say, hey, it's not bad to come home and serve our people. So I will support your efforts. I hope that the committee report will be out immediately for this session, but I think it's important that you give that balance to the board that you've worked closely too in the past. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Maasi. Vice Speaker. Senator Barnett.
Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker. I'm Manana Sisus to everyone in the panel. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Uggan, for your willingness to serve, and while you come with a lot of great recommendations from a lot of good physicians. I just want to echo the Speaker's comments. I don't really have a question, but, you know, I've known your family for a long time, and Kamachili Tree Mini Store is a special place in my heart. But for me, my main concern, again, is when you, anybody out there who, if you just do a simple Google of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, obviously, over the years, coming from the media, the number-one concern has been the lack of action on patient complaints. And I know the Speaker had asked you a little bit about your role and your willingness to investigate those complaints, which I won't do, but I noticed just in reading some of the media reports, there were some stretches of six years where no complaints were investigated or dealt with. And then, most recently, the GBME has struggled with legal representation issues that have kind of prevented them from moving forward in investigating those patient complaints. So just, I guess, what are your thoughts on those issues? And if you could just go into a little more detail on how you would be impartial in ensuring patient safety with your role?
You know, I can only use my current, or my experience as a leader, as the assistant chief medical officer and chief medical officer at GMH when dealing with physicians requiring discipline. In my experience, during the five years, a little bit over five years, that I sat as an administrator over medical staff, I have very little tolerance, if any tolerance, for physicians not holding themselves accountable for patient safety issues. Very little. I work well, though, with my physicians. If they're having personal issues, trying to create programs so that they're monitored and they're safe, their personal issues are dealt with or given time off. I have had no issues not continuing contracts for patient safety issues. It's always a patient safety issue for me. And so sitting on the GBME will be no different.
Thank you for that. And so I know you referenced your role at, your current role at Guam Memorial Hospital. So are you able to disclose or confirm if there have been any complaints recently at GMH?
So recently, I don't sit. I'm not in the executive administration. I now take care of the outpatient services, trying to improve the processes there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good luck, Dr. Uggan.
Thank you.
Sisus Maasi. Senator Barnett. Vice Chair, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly welcome to you, Dr. Uggan, and all those that are here to testify on your behalf this morning. Looking over your application here, it indicates you have several other positions, almost four other positions at GMH. Medical Director of Pulmonary Services, Medical Director of Telemedicine, Medical Director of ICU, CCU Respiratory Services, Pulmonary and Critical Care Physician Consultant. And then you're also listed with Mariana's Medical Specialist Group as a pulmonologist, which I assume is a private clinic? How do you do all this in one day? And how are your hours divided? And how are you compensated for those hours? I mean, would each of these positions at the hospital require a separate doctor? Are you combining that? Or what is this? Because, I mean, at the end of the day, even the best, most capable person, it's a lot to do. And I'm a little concerned, how spread out are you? And otherwise, would there be an individual doctor filling each of these positions that you're currently filling?
I agree. I do fulfill a lot of those positions, which I already do. So as a pulmonary and critical care physician and being the medical director of the ICU, it falls in line with my profession. The development of telemedicine, I developed this program during the pandemic, and I basically watch over it and help with any issues that may come forth. But it does have its own supervisor. I am the medical director for the physicians. So if the physicians have any issues, then I do address it. We don't have many issues to address, but it is a combination of leadership roles that fall in line with my profession. Mariana's Medical Specialist Group is not a clinic. I'm an independent contractor, and that's the business. That's my business. And so I work as an independent contractor, as a pulmonary and critical care physician for the hospital. It's not two separate roles. But I do agree with you. I don't know how I did the pandemic with everything else. I really don't. I honestly, before I even stepped into the administrative role, was concerned about the balance. But what I found is that anytime I saw a patient, I saw a patient with multiple hats. It was their safety. It was whether or not they were getting their medications. It was whether or not orders were being carried out. And when nurses reported that there were issues, it was immediately working on those issues, using my committee to address the multidisciplinary processes that needed to be improved. So when I see patients, it's never just a doctor-patient encounter. It's always the process of taking care of that patient.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm just kind of curious. I don't know if the hospital in particular just has all these different titles. How is that?
How does it have to be?
Are you seeing all of these fall under one umbrella? Normally, you would be, have an umbrella title. I'm just curious, because these are all broken up here. And then also, you said you're a private contractor.
So they are now?
I'm sorry. Okay. You said you're also a private contractor with the Mariana's Medical Specialist Group, and that is your business? And so how do you fulfill that obligation in a private capacity with these positions that you have at GMH?
So I'm a physician, and I'm a physician leader. And so I have been doing this since 2015. I have been the medical director of the ICU. I use my time at the bedside to teach my nurses. And that's what I've been doing. I took the ICU to the standard of care. When I first got to GMH, it wasn't performing as it should, as an ICU actually should. Over the years, I have, I've led the pandemic at GMH. You know, I worked tirelessly to build these protocols, and I basically now sit and oversee it. The processes are already built. They've been built over the last nine years. And so now, I make sure that things continue to run the way it should, and then continue to update or create new policies and procedures as, you know, new developments happen.
With, as I asked earlier, would these positions otherwise have an individual doctor assigned to it? Or is this just something that's connected to your current position?
No, they're not full-time positions. Sorry, Senator.
That is, you know, a subsidiary of your current position?
Yeah, they're not, they're not full-time positions. The medical directorships. I don't spend full time. That's why there's a combination of them, and they all encompass my profession.
Okay. And then with your private specialist group here, how do you, how do you perform duties with that, with what is already quite a substantial amount of work you do?
Currently, I just work at GMH. That's what I do, under the independent contractor. I'm just not paid as an employee. I'm paid as a contractor.
Okay. Well, yeah, your employment history doesn't provide that clarification. So it's in this capacity, as a private doctor, that you're performing these duties at GMH?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that clarifies that. I know the Speaker had already asked earlier with regards to your time to also be able to sit on the medical board here. And do you feel comfortable you'll be able to do that with some consistency?
Yes, I do.
And what do you feel, I mean, obviously, the efficiencies have been there over the years. I mean, it's mind-boggling how something as important as health care, that these things get left behind, but they have. How do you feel you can improve with regards to the services and response time of the medical board to complaints that are provided? Because obviously, it's a sensitive issue. We go to doctors, you know, because, most cases, almost all cases, because we have a health issue. And that's obviously, something's very sensitive. It's not like a car or a house or something external to you that you can repair. It can have impact on your ability to exist and live, right? And so when complaints are made against doctors, it's almost unsettling, because it's like a teacher or someone that, you know, you should have trust in, in their ability to properly perform their duties. And then complaints get made, for whatever reason, from the perspective of a patient. Maybe they feel they've been wrong, they've not been properly treated. And of course, we've heard, you know, in the media of one particular doctor, that maybe sexually harming his patients. Things like that are very unsettling. How do you feel your experience or your expertise that you can bring to the table to improve on that so that the public, which I think it's kind of concerning that in the area of health care, but in the time I've been in the legislature, the trust and confidence the public has because of the performance of the board is not there to the degree I think we should expect it? Because we look at health care as, should be a positive thing, and all those that are there, that are caring, and, you know, they have the expertise to take care of us and that these, you know, ugly issues don't arise. But how do you feel you can contribute or improve on that with your experience and what your know-how is so far with the issues that have faced the board?
You know, I think that for me personally, as a leader, I'm not just a leader, and I'm not just a physician that takes care of patients. I am empathetic to patients because I've been a patient. So I understand, you know, what it's like on the other end. I know what it's like to be very sick. I know what it's like to actually have my nurses take care of me instead of the other way around. And I came home to help move health care forward on this island, and everything that I have done has helped contribute to that. And so I would work closely with Dr. Berg and the And so I would work closely with Dr. Berg and the few board members, I understand, that are left, to try and help build out these processes and use the leadership knowledge that I am gaining and have gained over these years to try and improve the efficiencies.
I appreciate that, because we've had, you know, obviously, and some complaints that have been brought forth, at least public statements that have been made by patients that feel they've been victimized, one way or the other, by a medical doctor, is that the, the, I guess essentially, the layout of the process and procedures are not evident to them in terms of simply, you know, they present a complaint, and then they don't know where it goes, or if that complaint's going to be entertained, or what's the timeline so that they can expect to know what to do? Or ensure that their complaint is being heard, and if there's anything that has happened that's been improper, that it's addressed? Or, you know, that doctor's sanctioned or corrected, or if they need to have their license removed because the action that they committed obviously required that, then that would be the expectation. So from the, from the patient's point of view, how can you help facilitate that the board provides that, that when someone makes a complaint, there's something given to them that outlines, this is the process and procedure, this is the timeline that you can expect, so that they know what to do? I mean, short of hiring attorney, what do you do? And then you end up litigating these issues, which most people, the average person out there, doesn't have the resources to do it. But yet, we expect if we know someone has been wronged or been violated or harmed physically because, you know, a medical physician has not properly carried out their duties, you know, we need to know that there's some recourse. We need to have some comfort in that, and that we know that the medical board that, you know, supposed to have these experts sitting on it, reviewing these actions, can do so in a timely fashion. So the end of the day, I think what we all want to see is that justice is served. If, if the patient is, you know, in error, then by all means, that should also come to light. Maybe they're not aware of what's involved in a certain procedure, and that they can be informed of that, so that they just don't feel like they're left out in the cold, and the system is against them, which is typically how it's always lined up.
I understand, Senator. I think what I hear you saying is that we need to improve our transparency, and we definitely need to improve our empathy for patients who feel like, you know, they, they either have been wronged or have suffered. And my whole point of even accepting this position and increasing responsibility is to serve the public. I'm not here to serve the physicians. I'm here to serve the public. And so I will work towards increasing the transparency, improving the communication between the Guam Medical Board of Examiners and the people of Guam, and look at them through the eyes with empathy, because I think that I'm a very compassionate and empathetic person.
Well, I certainly hope and look forward to that, because I think there's, at least in the time I've been back here, a need to do that. Because we kind of forget, ultimately, it's really the patients we all want to see served, and we want to make sure that we're in a safe and healthy environment, obviously, for our people. Because again, you know, we don't know the circumstances under which our time will come, or what may lead to that, what health issue we may have. It could be an unexpected accident, or whatever the case may be. But again, there are areas of our government that we should have an expectation, you know, that if we come and make a complaint, and most people probably don't. I think in our community, because of embarrassment or fear, or, you know, it's like you're taking on the system, and most people feel they're outnumbered from the very beginning, probably there are people out there that have gone through these issues and simply don't come forth because of those reasons. And so I think anyone who does, I give them credit, because they're, they're one person against the system. And they, I think there needs to be a process of ensuring as they go through it, they know what to expect, they know timelines, they have an expectation, you know, that my concern and my complaint's going to be heard, it's going to be evaluated, it's going to be addressed, and I'm going to be informed, or I'm going to know what the outcome is, and wherever I, as a patient, need to come in and enter, you know, put my two cents in, so that you know what, what offended me as the patient, that they have an opportunity and comfort level to do that. Because I just don't think we're there yet. This has been an area, and again, where, where, you know, the amount of years and education and the professional work that all of you have to do in your field, you know, is quite significant. But yet, in the area where you interface with the public, where there may be, and it's uncomfortable, we're looking at circumstances that are uncomfortable, we don't have that, you know, nice professional response that should be there for anyone, and it could be any of us, it could be our family members, for whatever reason, that may have an issue that has to come before the board. And I, I would want to know that they have some sense of comfort, that the system's there to listen and address their concerns appropriately. And if they've been wrong, by all means, take appropriate action that needs to be taken to address whatever the case may be. So I appreciate, again, thank you for coming forward. You know, it sounds like you have a lot on your plate, and you've added on something more, and I hope you're able to balance that, because I'll tell you, you know, the demands of life and work can suck the life out of you, literally. So I hope you, you're able to continue to find balance, because we still have to enjoy the time that we're here with the people that we care about. So thank you very much for your interest in stepping forward.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Vice Chair Brown. So, Dr. Uggan, yeah, I was reviewing my files from, we had oversight hearings over the H P L O Health Professional Licensing Office and G B M E as part of that in 2020, 2021, and recently in different hearings. And there are other issues that we've talked about, I wanted to just mention to you. Of course, we've talked about the timeliness. I think the number one complaint we receive is that the complaints take too long. There, these people who have made these complaints are not being responded to, they are not being told the status, or they're not seeing action by the board. The board says sometimes it has to, it hasn't investigated the complaint, or the investigations are pending, we need to hire someone from off-island to investigate it. But there are other boards who do all the investigations themselves, and I think that's what they used to do for years, right? We've given, we've authorized them to spend, the board, each board has its own money, and that comes from fees. So it's supposed to use its fees to hire attorney, hire investigators if it needs. But of course, it depends on how much fees you bring in, how many people you can hire versus having to do it yourself. And my concern is that if we're only going to hire doctors from off-island to do investigations, we are going to take a very long time. It will be very expensive, and it's, it's, I don't know, I don't think it's, there's always the best solution. You're coming onto a board where many of the members have been serving for a very long time, and I'm hoping that that will not intimidate you in any way. It doesn't look like it will, but that, that you, we are hoping you're also going to bring in a fresh perspective and a very keen understanding of how the community feels about not having these complaints addressed promptly, for whatever reason. There are other things, such as the posting on the website. We're supposed to have all physicians posted, any complaints made against them or things. There are certain parameters of what should be posted and what should not be posted. And I know, last, the H P L O, they've been working on this regularly, but I want you to make sure that's part of your duties to follow up on that, and make sure that that's, as you say, transparency is key for trust. The other one is, there have been recent stories of complaints made against physicians who actually have had complaints made against them in other jurisdictions prior to being licensed on Guam. So the community questions the board, well, why did you license them if they already had complaints in other jurisdictions? Those kind of things, I think, I'm hoping you, you are going to be able to bring your own fresh perspective to that, and really set a standard for our community that is what our community deserves. Because I, that's kind of the worst-case scenario, right? Making a complaint against a physician, and then, you know, maybe a delay in the answer, that's one thing. But to find out later that this physician we're complaining about actually had complaints before they were licensed here, when there was a discretion there, you know, you're going to have to really, I think, independently determine how much discretion each of the board members has versus what you're being told by anybody there. This is one thing I see with the boards. It's like, new members come on, and they're kind of indoctrinated by the older members, but I think each new member has to bring in a new, fresh perspective. And they have to independently determine whether that's in your parameters or not, and to really stretch those, stretch those, stretch those things out, you know? Question them and make sure, do we have more discretion than what they're telling us? Can we say no, right? Or not? And, and that type of thing. I don't know, I, I, you haven't been on the board yet, so I don't, you know, I'm not critical of anything you've done, but I just want to say, those are my concerns. And it's very hard, once somebody's approved, to really hold them accountable on that. It's really only the public that we have to hold members of the board accountable after they've been confirmed by the legislature. And the terms are quite long, four years. So I don't know, how do you feel about some of these things? Do you think you'd be able on this board to act independently, to make your own decisions, even if it goes against the grain of those that have been serving there for a long time?
You know, I, I say this jokingly, but there is definitely some truth to this, and I've said this in the past, that I'm probably, when stepping into my administrative role, the most hated administrator, because I change things. I am a big person who looks at processes, and I love to change process if we are inefficient with the process. And so I, I don't think that there's going to be any influence for me not to do the right thing. I, that's what I do. I do what's, what the right thing is, what I feel is the right thing. I worked, you know, I work hard, I advocate for patients and, and my staff. I don't feel that I'm going to, I, I don't, I'm not a follower. I'm, I'm going to go against the grain, I always do, and I think that's probably one of my biggest assets, but maybe a weakness for some.
Thank you. My understanding also is that some of these boards assign cases out to different members, and that, so they, it's kind of like subcommittee work, and then they will come back and report on each of the cases, or, you know, it's that one person's responsibility to, to report. But I also, I think that may be efficient in certain conditions, but it also has to work only while there is also independent, independent review by each member of the cases. So you can't simply be told by other people, this is what we should do in this case. You're going to have to make an independent decision based on reading for yourself and hearing their recommendations, but, but both, kind of. I just want to make sure I, I don't question your work ethic, so I think that we won't have any issues there, but I guess I'm just making that statement also for the public, because I think that's how we want all our boards to act. While we delegate some responsibility, when the decisions come back, they are the full board's responsibility, and we, we want that. You are acting on behalf of the community, as you say, so I very much appreciate your perspective in that regard.
I know that I have some learning to do. There is definitely a learning curve, and will spend the time to understand what my role is, and then how I can improve any of the processes that G B M E has, and take into consideration all the complaints that have been brought forward today, so that as we make change, that we improve our transparency, timeliness, and communication with the public.
Sisus Massey, again, Dr. Uggan, for your willingness to serve on this board. Thank you again to all of those who have submitted testimony and helped us to gain a further perspective of this candidate's nomination and experience and commitment. So again, thank you to all of you. So this, this nomination is duly heard by this committee. Sisus Massey. We'll now move on to the other nomination. This is the reappointment of Dr. Nathaniel Berg. He is on Zoom, so we'll just get that set up real quick. Dr. Nathaniel Berg has been reappointed to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners for a term of four years from the date of confirmation. He's the current chairperson of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and has served at least two terms. Dr. Berg, are you there?
I am.
Oh, hi, Dr. Berg. Thank you. Before we hear testimony from you, Dr. Berg, we're going to welcome testimony by the others who are here, and then we'll hear from you. All right? Thank you. So we'll begin with the Deputy Director, Public Health.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Vice Speaker, and Senator Brown, my name is Peter John Camacho. I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I'm here presenting testimony on behalf of our Director, Teresa C. Ariola. This testimony is in support of the reappointment of Dr. Nathaniel B. Berg to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Dr. Berg has been a pillar in the Guam medical field for over a decade, and his service to the people of Guam shows no boundaries. Dr. Berg played a critical role in serving as Governor Lulian Guerrero's Physician Advisory Group Chair during the COVID-19 pandemic, where he bore the responsibility of advising and developing policy to keep our people safe during the public health emergency. Dr. Berg's radiology clinic, Guam Radiology, is a key part in Guam's medical field. His clinic services include state-of-the-art screenings to detect lung, cancer, breast disease, and osteoporosis. Dr. Berg has also shown to put the people of, the people over the money, with Guam Radiology offering some of its services at no cost to qualified individuals. With this reason, I humbly voice my support and urge the 37th Guam Legislature to vote in favor of reappointing Dr. Nathaniel Berg to serve on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, Teresa C. Ariola. And on a personal note, I would also like to share that I've known Dr. Berg for many years, and his commitment to his specialty and to the profession and medicine on Guam has been exemplary, and we are very fortunate that he's continued to make Guam his home. And I also respectfully request the committee to confirm his nomination and reappointment as the Guam Board of Medical Examiners member. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Deputy Director, Camacho, Public Health. We also have, not signed up, but Doctor, please proceed.
Yeah. Originally, I came down to support Jolene. I didn't know Nathaniel was up for renomination.
Could you please state your name and association?
Excuse me, I apologize. John Sidell, Chief Medical Officer, G M H, and I currently, in that capacity, sit on the Board of Medical Examiners. I served on the board maybe, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, and I've seen a lot of changes for, in, in the positive under Nathaniel's leadership. I was listening to the senators, particularly Dr. Brown, and I gotta, I gotta agree with you. We, we, we need to do a little better on communicating and getting some of these cases solved, and so I'm not unappreciative of what you've said. I think Nathaniel works hard. I've seen it with my own eyes, and I, the board has evolved, and it's better than it was, and that's under Nathaniel's leadership. So I'm willing to highly recommend Nathaniel. He's a tireless worker, one of the brightest individuals I've ever met, and I think he, I think his leadership is crucial, and he really tries to do a good job. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Dr. Sidell. There are others signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to present testimony on behalf of Dr. Berg? If not, Dr. Berg, you may proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker Jalahe, Vice Speaker Timon Barnes, and Vice Chair Brown. And if Senator Burnett returns, I also would like to thank him for giving me this opportunity to speak. I've never been accused of being a man of few words, but I'll do my best to respect your time. I think it's worth going over a little bit as to why, why I'm sitting here today, and what I'm, what I'm hoping to be able to accomplish during a transition period, because I'm not looking to remain the chair for the next four years, not at all. I, but I do think it's worth going over a little bit of history. When, when I joined the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, Ki Ramani was, Dr. Ki Ramani Ki Ramani was, Dr. Ki Ramani was the chair and Joan Gill was the vice chair. I think Joan had been on for about 12 years. And she was the institutional knowledge. She had the history of the board that was extremely important because it's not like you could go into a Nexus or Lexis to something to help look up legal precedent. It really sits with individual board members. And they asked me to be the chair almost immediately and I declined. Saying that I needed to have at least a year of experience under their guidance before I would be willing to accept it. They, they granted me that and a year later I was elected and accepted that time with the proviso that Ki Ramani would stay on the board and sit to my left and that Joan Gill would sit to my right so as to help me not to make mistakes. No question that it's, it's not a perfect board, but I think part of the benefit that they gave me in terms of being able to stay there and provide that mentorship and provide me with institutional knowledge that I wouldn't otherwise have had as to how cases were handled previously. That was incredibly valuable for me and the board and helped me to develop the improvements that have taken place. And I think it's important to note that because I don't exactly go out there and, and put billboards up nor do I post on social media or go to media at all to discuss some of the very positive things that have happened with the board. And I, I think that's important. Perhaps most important has been my introduction to the Federation State Medical Boards, which is the governing board for all boards, medical boards in the US, which is 70 some odd boards because they have osteopathic boards and medical boards sometimes are combined as they are with our jurisdiction and in other cases they're not. So when I was introduced to them and it is, it, it, the, the board must send the chair. The chair has to go every year. And I think that's an important thing that has in some ways, and I'll talk a little bit about this in a minute about why people have not want to join. But it's required that you go and Guam has to have a voice there. And so I've attended every single meeting over the last eight years and have strived to network so that I could be an integral part of that board to give Guam a voice there. And that has been accomplished. So I was elected an official. Again, I, I think that's not about me and an important component of this testimony I have is that it's not about my accomplishments. It's about what the board has been able to do and the support they've had of the HPLO and indeed of the legislature in many cases. So I've been able to attend and to make changes such that the voice of the small communities of, that are smaller communities, I should say, that make up part of the Federation State Medical Boards are louder now than they used to be. In fact, I founded the group of non-contiguous jurisdictions, which is Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, Hawaii, Alaska and Guam, so that we could have a louder voice in unison. Additionally, I did my best to voice concerns by veterans because there are very few veterans serving in the Federation State Medical Boards. I might add that that group is 1 million physicians strong. So getting heard can be very difficult. But I've worked my, I've done my best and I sit on committees and I fly out. I might add oftentimes at my own expense. In fact, I should say my expenses are never completely covered. And I think that has been a difficult thing for others to do and to take that time away. Fortunately, I have been able to manage to do that. And I'm very committed to that. So I became an elected member and I've served on numerous work groups. And to emphasize that, I would like to very briefly share my screen, which I'm going to figure out how to do in half a second. So that I could just show you the voice that we have currently. Let me see, it's here. So this is, I hope that you all can see this. And I want you to see one group. I, I just attended a meeting in Washington DC of one day's duration, which is something that many people don't want to do, but I'm quite committed to making sure our voice is heard. So this is a group on, the, the work group on reentry to practice. This is very important for people to understand the, I'm sorry, it's important that people understand the importance of that on Guam. This is for physicians who perhaps may have been practicing in the Philippines for a few years. I'm doing everything I can to increase the number of qualified applicants. And one thing is to adjust the rules for reentry to practice nationally. And also to look at alternative pathways to licensure, which I know everyone has been talking about. Can we license physicians who haven't trained in the US at all? The answer is we're working on it and it has to be a national policy. And getting Guam's, Guam's voice heard is critical to me, at least I, and it's critical to our island's well-being because we have accessibility to international physicians who want to come to Guam because they want to be close to the Philippines or they want to be closer to Japan or closer to India. And I'd just like to point out the people who are on here on this committee is the current chairwoman of the Federation State Medical Boards, the president and chief executive officer of the Federation State Medical Boards. Both of these organizations are 1 million members strong. The chair-elect who's coming in also is from Massachusetts. The member from Georgia, who's the head of the, who holds the same position as the head of the board there, he's been on for 17 years. Wyoming also has a strong interest as a small committee, the PA from Oregon. We've talked about this before to members of the legislature about how the PAs should be part of our board. He, so this is changing reentry practice, which affects physicians' assistants as well. A member representative from the American Medical Association, New York State, the president of the Board of New York State, Dr. Epstein, is the chair of a board that governs over 100,000 physicians. The head of the American College of Physicians and Rehabilitation, American Academy of Pediatrics, the Board of Directors from Maine, she is, I'm sorry, she's the Board of Directors of the Federation State Medical Boards. The certification of PAs, the American Academy of Osteopathic Physicians. I think people know that that's an alternative, that there's MDs and DOs. And in North Carolina, he's also, this is an attorney who is, represents the board from North Carolina and Texas A&amp;M Health Center, which I think is 40,000 employees strong, plus others who are there. And if you look, there's also one thing that doesn't seem to fit, but I'm trying to make it fit. Guam. So our voice has been looked at as strong for the last eight years, strong and that we will not sit quietly and have legislation passed that doesn't take into consideration the territory of Guam. So I sit on this as one group and the other one is to, is working for the, as I mentioned, the, I'll, I'll unshare my screen now. Apologies. Let's see, how do I do that? Let's double check.
Dr. Berg, can we take one minute? We're not seeing your, your presentations. I'm going to ask audio if that's possible to show those.
I, yeah, let me see if I can do that again. Let me see if I can. I thought I shared it. Here. What now? Can you see it now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. I apologize, Madam Speaker.
All right, there you go.
Highlighted some of the members and I'm not going to redo it again in the interest of time. But you can see these are, I would say the most prominent members of the medical community in the country. And I have done my best with the support of the HPLO and the board members to keep Guam on that map, to keep us on this shortlist of those who insist that their voice is heard. So if you're changing rules for reentry to practice nationally, you better believe that the American Academy of Pediatrics, that the American Medical Association and states such as New York, which have, as I mentioned, over 100,000 physicians, that they want their voices heard. And I've done my best to make sure that our voice is heard. And this is also in a, in a tri-regulatory environment, which means when they affect the nurses and the pharmacy board organizations nationally, that I ensure that our voice is heard at those meetings as well, which takes a lot of travel. So Xenia and I end up traveling a lot. I'll stop the sharing. And so I think that's important. Also, we have now managed to have Guam be accepted as an independent member of the International Association of Medical Regulatory Authorities, IAMRA. That's been a great accomplishment, I think, on the part of the HPLO and we got us in as an independent, as independent from the United States. That was our argument was the, we were recognized as a colony by the United Nations. We had Olympic teams and FIFA and other organizations internationally recognized us as independent and having our own issues. So they accepted us. So that leads to our being able to better work with international organizations that regulate medicine in an effort to allow for improved scrutiny of international physicians. That meeting starts next September. And we must have representation in IAMRA. Also, I have been making a sincere effort. So far, it's been troublesome, but we're, that we're all, I think we're on the right track now to develop a physician health program. This used to be called the impaired physician, impaired physician program. Guam is so small that we cannot have one just for physicians. And physicians become unhealthy with mental health issues, addiction issues, just like anyone else. And I know that it's been very difficult for impaired physicians because we've had to send them off island and I've worked with other state boards in their health programs to assist us in dealing with those issues, to help physicians get better and come back and take care of people. But I met recently with Chris Bundy, who is the, he runs the National Association of Physician Health Programs and he has agreed to provide help. That is again through working with the Federation State Medical Boards. We requested that they help so that we can develop our own program. And we're making it a unique program where we know, for example, the BAR Association does not have an impaired attorney or I don't know if it's now called Attorney Health Program. The Board of Engineers, the Board of Social Work, we want to make it a, a professional health program so that all licensed professionals on Guam can avail themselves of it, of that program. That'll take a while, but it's been, I've worked with the Tennessee Board and now working with the Georgia Board and the, I'm sorry, and Hawaii, these are the professional health programs. The one in Hawaii also, but they're stretched thin and many are stretched thin. So we went to the national organization who is lending us a consultant. We may end up having to hire a consultant, but one has been identified who will help see us through to get this done. And I'll be reaching out to the BAR Association and others once we are a little bit further along. But that's important to note that we are working on that. And so there are other aspects of the Federation State Medical Boards that will require somebody who's extremely committed to making sure Guam's voice is heard nationally. That again, I said, requires traveling and working, not just attending these meetings, but actually joining work groups and speaking up. So that doesn't come over one year. It, it, it comes over attending these meetings for many years. I would personally like to see this handed over to someone new because it's, it, it's, it's just what I want to do. I would like to be able to pull in a new person to make sure that that has happened. To have a new voice come from Guam. And I think that that's critical and I, and I had hoped to do this. I think it's really important to note that I've made efforts to get in a new chair. Dr. Net David, whom I can thank publicly for having served on the board. I asked her to do it. I think she would have been extremely well qualified. She is entering a new phase of her life where they, she and her husband, Dr. Rubio, are veering towards retirement. And so she declined and in fact, didn't even want to be on the board for another time, another, another term due to the fact that she is moving towards retirement. I asked Dr. Arania Adelson and she declined and as she, as I found out later, perhaps why is, has moved off island. So she can't do it. And I think there's a little bit of a correction. There aren't any people like me who've been on for a long time. The new members have been on for a short period, the current members have been on for a short period of time. I'm the only legacy person and I very much would like to bring in people and welcome new voices. I think it is important to note that the Guam Board of Medical Examiners is not Dr. Nathaniel Berg. Oftentimes, the board and the media, particularly in social media, I'm the target. And that's fine where it says Berg this and Berg that, when in fact, it's been members of the board who have made decisions. And I think, Madam Speaker, one thing, for example, you've mentioned about bringing cases back. Let me, let me address a couple of those things very quickly. Just, and I'm not here to be defensive. We definitely have room for improvement, no question about it. And that can come through new leadership. I'm very much aware of that. I think I can't, I can't say I've done a perfect job, but I certainly have done my best. We are now down to three active complaints, whereas I think previously they were much larger. I will say that a few of the misconceptions that are out there in the media are worth addressing without me being overly defensive. So most cases are adjudicated very quickly and this does not come as an excuse, but I think if you look at other states, for example, I just was looking at Georgia's board. I think Georgia and Louisiana both say to the complainants that it could take a couple of years for cases to be resolved. It just does. The vast majority of cases are, are done, are handled very quickly. Most are not sent off island, very few, very few. In fact, I think half a dozen at most of the last eight years have required outside review bodies. And in most, most boards nationally, and we were advised by FSMB to use independent investigators, not to have board members investigate, but we're small and that costs money. So we do have board members investigate and they bring back the, their findings for discussion to the board with all of their findings available for board members to scrutinize. So that's always done. Now, some cases are very simple. For example, if someone finds that there's no jurisdiction or the physician has retired, fine. But the vast majority are handled quickly. The communication has by and large been very good. We have very few complaints about communication, but those are too many. A few is too many, but most are not. We don't, they don't, just, they just don't make the media. So in cases of physicians who were licensed, who had complaints against them through prior boards are very far and few between. In point of fact, the complaints that we've had about physicians, I believe there's one who had a significant board complaint. That's the same physician that you had mentioned, Madam Speaker, about who, who was accused of assaulting patients. Not the, there is a current case of which I am recused from, so I don't, I'm not involved in that case. But I'm talking about a previous case, only one ever came that had that and that was a person who had been licensed, had had issues previous, with previous boards. And we were told by legal counsel at that time from the AG that we could not hold this person doubly accountable. He had been, his case had been adjudicated by the Maryland Board and the person was advised to, I'm sorry, and the person had served his time, if you will, had done what the board had asked and his license was reinstated. And we were told that we cannot hold that person, cannot rehold that person accountable as that case had already been adjudicated. That was one case for that person in 20 some odd years of practice. Maybe it was more, maybe it was 30 some odd years. We got a complaint and I will tell you that unbeknownst to the public, the day I got the complaint regarding the, the allegations, they were so serious and we got six complaints about that person in one day. That's unprecedented. It was not that six came in and then we did something. They all came in at one time and that person, I took the unprecedented, again, actions of suspending that physician's license right then because they, it was, they were so serious. So it's not true that we don't act quickly. We do. It's just not always possible. Majority of cases are handled very quickly. So the, that one case like that was immediate suspension of, of the physician's license. And that physician's license never was returned. We do hold physicians accountable. I will say that in every case, not every case, most, some cases were able to settle by doing our best to initiate communication directly between the patient and the complainant. Oftentimes that communication is broken down and that leads to the complaint. When we can reinstitute that physician-patient relationship with better communication, a large number of cases can be resolved as we've found. But those that do end up having to be adjudicated by the board, it's a bit like a trial in that there's a winner and a loser. Unfortunately, sometimes when we give less punishment to a physician than the complainant would like, the physician's upset that they even got punished and the complaint's upset that we didn't provide a harsher punishment. And in those situations, then the board, nobody likes the board. But in almost every case, there's a winner and a loser and someone is happy with our behavior and someone's unhappy with it. And that often makes its way to traditional media and to social media, which can lead to members of the physician community not wanting to serve on the board because they are going to be put in the spotlight and they don't want to be. They certainly don't like the social media aspect that that sits there forever. The legacy media or traditional media also is there. They don't want their families. They don't want their, their children, their colleagues reading their names. People don't, most physicians didn't enter the profession with some desire to go into regulatory medicine. I perhaps, I'm different in that both of my parents were public health physicians and were relatively I perhaps I'm different in that both of my parents were public health physicians and were relatively high profile in what they did. And my, in fact, my mother served, I will thank Deputy Director Peter John Camacho. My mother served in that same capacity in the state of Massachusetts and was very high profile. So I guess I'm used to it. So I am doing the best I can to improve the board. Getting us down to three is good. We've improved our ability to get access to funds. It was very difficult, Madam Speaker, previously. And I thank you for your assistance in making it easier for us to access funds. And with that, I don't want to keep going on. I think at this point I'll take questions and address concerns. I will make a commitment to the committee that I am entirely committed to mentoring a member of the board who is willing to serve as the chair and to step aside as quickly as possible. I cannot imagine that that could, would take a year. It should take much less than a year. But I'd like that person to be able to come with me to the Federation State Medical Board so I can make the proper introductions to I Amra, to make the proper introductions to the international community. And to help in a transition so that there is new leadership, so there are new voices. I can't even slightly disagree. I completely agree with the concept of bringing in new voices and new opinions. And not to listen to the one guy who's been on the board. The other ones are new, so their discussions hopefully reflect newer opinions. But I will do my best to provide guidance, not to do what I did, not to do what I do either, but to help understand the regulatory aspects of what we do and how to be in compliance with open government and transparency and the like, and how to run meetings, because that is not intuitive. With that, I will stop and thank you very much for allowing me to speak and for taking up your time, which I know is extremely valuable.
Sisus Masi, Dr. Berg, for your willingness to serve, to continue to serve on this board and of course, for the work that you've done over the years. I know you've been appointed to the board since 2017, almost eight years now. And as you've noted, you were made the leader of the board. And so I thank you for taking on all of those additional responsibilities and really going an extra way in representing Guam to national associations and making sure that our perspective is heard there. And so I do appreciate that. And of course, the changes that have been made to the board and thank you for clarifying the record on some of those things. So I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions if you don't mind. One of them, oh, and before I I go on, we did receive also written testimony and support by Dr. Blounts. Ed Blounts, IM physician at GMA, he's a member of GMS and GMA in support. You have business interests in Guam X-ray, Pacific Cardiology Consultants, Guam Medical Imaging Center, Guam Medical Waste Management, Nobility Distributors and GRC, MCLS. Many of these are are businesses that do business with physicians and I just wonder if you believe any of these has an impact on your role in investigating or kind of making judgment on these physicians on your, in your role on the board?
Well, I think, thank you for that question. And the answer is, they could. I do recuse myself frequently. Naturally, we have quite a few physicians and physicians assistants and nurse practitioners that work for those healthcare organizations. And I recuse myself completely whenever, whenever I see any concept of a or notion of a conflict. But I also will say that that is true for most board members. For example, one of the board members is the, is an administrator, also plays a high level administrative role at GRMC. And so he has to recuse himself frequently when it has to do with GRMC physicians. We've had physicians from American Medical Center, which also has a large number of physicians. And anything that sort of connects there, we do recuse ourselves. It's very difficult. I'll tell you in California, for example, where there are a hundred and ten thousand physicians, I think it's about that. If the complaint involves anyone in your county, you have to recuse yourself. You can imagine that in Guam, it's not possible to do that. So we do our best. I do try to be objective whenever a case comes up in terms of seeing if there is something that might be a conflict, but the reality is that we all know each other here. And I have a hundred percent been punitive with physicians who I would consider colleagues in my medical community, but I've taken an oath to protect the public. So we've, I've suspended. And when I say I, by the way, that's as the chair by name is on the bottom of the form. I'm one voice on a board that is supposed to have seven members. But my name is traditionally there. And so I, when I suspend people, they are colleagues. Sometimes our kids go to school together, but I have no choice. I have to, I have to be objective. And and that's the trust that the public has in me is not to ever let those things influence me. Do I think that it has led to fewer referrals and things of that nature? No, I think this community takes pride in our ability to wear different hats so that I guess the short answer is I do everything I can not to let any of those positions that I hold in any capacity within the community, even if they're you know, at schools or in charitable organizations. I do my best to constantly check myself to make sure that I'm not influenced. And if there's any notion that I recuse myself.
Thank you. I I do note that you, your attendance at the board meetings really has been very good. So I want to thank you for that. You have been a very active chair and a very active member. So I have no complaints in that regard. And I appreciate your, your pointing out that it may be hard for physicians to serve on this board because of the criticism by the media. It is a big, it's a big thing and we we very much appreciate that because we, we are subject to the same type of scrutiny. With appointees to the board, they're appointed for four years. There is no there is no check and balance on that. We, nobody can force a person off of a board once they've been confirmed for four years. So it really is the public that that has the only power to do that. So I believe that the more transparent the boards are, that's better for the public and I just want to encourage you to continue to find ways to be more transparent that yeah, and with all that the board is doing. Can you describe, so you, you said that you were advised by legal that there were certain things, of course, if there are complaints in other jurisdictions, if they've been punished or in any way held accountable in another jurisdiction. We can't hold that against them here. What type of discretion does the board have? Are you saying the board has no discretion at all in approving licenses? Or applicants if they meet the criteria? Or does the board have any discretion?
We do, ma'am, and there's often disagreement in the significance of what a physician, a physician's passed. For example, in a particular case, I think the record would reflect that I opposed licensure. But I'm just one voice because I felt that the degree of inappropriate behavior, unprofessional behavior in the part of that physician was so egregious as to say that we shouldn't have that person licensed. And I also, and I I don't think I spoke particularly well, I felt that had that occurred, the behavior occurred in Guam, we would have revoked that person's license. Not suspended, permanently revoked it. And that was what I brought up with the legal counsel at the time, who said, we don't make those, that you cannot, for example, I'm going to forget the exact example that he gave, but he said something to the effect of if a, if a person got caught, for example, drinking and driving. And and it was in California and they were punished with a year suspended license, but in Guam, that would have required two years. I'm just, I'm just making it up. He said, that doesn't mean that when that person comes to Guam, that they suddenly get an additional year added on, that the crime in that case was committed in the jurisdiction of California and it's heard in California and the punishment is meted out in California and the person is restored, given back their license in whatever law, according to whatever laws applying in California. And this was in the state of Maryland and he's, legal concept was that, that I I didn't have an ability to apply our punishment. The reason that that was in this particular case so critical is that was the only thing that that physician had ever violated that was reported. But I felt that that single incident was egregious enough to not to lead to revocation in the territory of Guam and voted and and did not want that person to be licensed. But the point being that we have to follow legal counsel who said, no, they felt that that one case had already been tried and that that was inadvisable to deny a license based upon one case. But you're absolutely right. We have great discretion and we do deny licenses on a regular basis, very regular basis to physicians who have committed offenses that led to them being punished, if you will, for, by other boards very frequently. And I will tell you that perhaps even more frequently, we'll be contacted unofficially and asked, would that person be considered? For example, local companies, that is those who might send temporary physicians. And typically, the answer is unlikely. I tell them you can apply, but our rules would such that it would be unlikely. So we often, so probably more people don't apply because they're aware that Guam is not a pushover. In fact, I think we're pretty stringent in whom we welcome to Guam for the same reason that you mentioned people getting on the board. Once they have the license, it's extremely difficult to take it away or even to subject it to limitations is extremely difficult. So yes, the discretion is there, but sometimes it's hard, as I mentioned, that one case and we argue it out on the board and my opinion was in the minority at that time. I I I hope that answers your question.
Yes, definitely. And I think that's very important. So I appreciate your perspective and that it's very, it's made very clear to the public that the board has large discretion despite, you know, we have rules and and we have to follow the rules and but we also are in protecting our community, granting this board huge discretion to use their judgment. And it's really a judgment thing and it's going to be based on each individual member's experiences in life and and in their practices and and with our community in particular. So I appreciate that very much. I'm gonna yes, Dr. Berg.
I I just wanted to add one important thing. So in the in the credentialing process, one thing where we've moved forward that has allowed us to have some more time. We are now requiring all applicants to apply through the FCVS, which is a federal credentialing verification service. This again is part of the FSMB. And this has led to our being able to have the staff be better able to help us because they no longer are having to look for, for example, primary verification from medical school applications. So you don't, we don't have to get the diplomas from their medical schools and their colleges and their residencies. That is all done for us through the Federation, I'm sorry, Federal Credentialing Verification Service, which is from the FSMB. It also has led to much faster ability to review applications and temporary applications now because they come in so well documented, we can typically provide licensure within forty eight hours, temporary licensure, which has been, I think, you were just talking to Dr. Uggan, she can tell you that they oftentimes have had, have had a need for people urgently to get licensed to be able to cover the intensive care unit. That's been a great step forward, very transparent, I might add, but it has allowed us to to improve the applicant pool because people can get in very quickly. They have to have no negative history anywhere in their record to get that done, but we can do it, we can get it done. I I worked with the state of New Hampshire to see how did they do it? And they had an average of forty eight hour turnaround time for temporary licenses once everything is submitted and we mirrored that. So it's another step forward in allowing us more time to adjudicate the complaints faster. And we want to adjudicate them as quickly as possible, but I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that people knew also we are more electronic. Everything is digitized now. All the records from nineteen seventy two are digitized. That's part of your mandating us to put everything on the board, on the website. We had to get everything digitized so that we could scrutinize every single current physician and allow for transparency and compliance with the rules and regulations put in place for what we're supposed to put on our website.
Thank you. And yeah, and appreciate those efforts to make it more efficient and quicker processing. So those were very helpful to us, I'm sure, over the last few years. So Sisus Masi, Dr. Berg. Going to now hand it over to Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And as I hear very closely to the statements in the presentation that Dr. Berg has presented before us, I I want to say I want to thank him for his leadership and his support. I know that he's been here since nineteen ninety five, almost thirty years ago. All the work he's done for the island of Guam, I know him from a personal perspective, also the work that he's done with the board. And when he was at Naval Hospital, even when his kids were on the soccer field. I I just want to say the support that he's given to the island of Guam has been great. I want to thank him for stepping up to the plate to continue this journey here with the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. I see that Mr. Peter John Camacho, Dr. Seidel, Dr. Uggan and Mr. Adonai are still here in in the public hearing room in the efforts to support you here, Madam Chair. I know that it's not always easy when when complaints are presented, but I know that he's done a lot of his work with fairness and I support his efforts and I hope that we continue to find folks in our community to support this commission or 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 this board because it's not an easy task and and he has presented a a long presentation about what he's done to date, what he wants to do, what he sees should be done, but to literally invite more people in this profession to be a part of this for the accountability, for the checks and balances. And I support Dr. Nathaniel Berg and I hope that his confirmation can be up on the next session agenda, Madam Speaker. So thank you very much. I don't have any questions for him as you have asked a lot of that and I appreciate him again volunteering for this position. Sina Masi.
Sina Masi. Vice Speaker, Vice Chairman Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly thank you to Dr. Berg. I've also been a patient of Dr. Berg, so I I've known him from a patient standpoint. Dr. Berg, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned about the transparency of the board and the need for that. And I wanted to ask you, and you're continuing your role to serve on this board, how do you think the board can improve with regards to that process and how? How can that impression and information be facilitated to the community? So that members of our community that may be coming to the board to file a complaint or issue know that their case is going to be properly entertained and entertained in a timely fashion. I just wanted to ask you that question.
I think it's a very fair question and it's also been an area where we clearly needed to improve and have room for improvement. I will tell you a couple of the steps that we have taken and also some, I think, just listening to you today, Madam Vice Chair, brought up an idea has brought up something that I think I need to bring back to the, to the Health Professional Licensing Office immediately. So previously, there was rather poor communication, admittedly. We didn't, we would let the complainant know that we had received the complaint and that we would be investigating. Currently, after every board meeting, the complainant is called to get an update as to the status of their complaints. There is an initial process that is outlined to them and it's a simple process for the And it's a simple process for the initial complaint, which is that we submit that complaint. Once we have confirmed that we have jurisdiction over the complaint, for example, if it was a complaint against a physician who doesn't practice in Guam, we wouldn't be able to do anything. But if it's a physician who is under our jurisdiction, we forward the complaint to the physician and that physician has 30 days to reply. And so that's the first part. After that, I think you had mentioned earlier, wouldn't it be much better if we were to provide a written outline to the complainant as to what steps come after that? Because usually we just, well, basically now we are giving telephone updates, the after-board meetings, so that the complainants know what has happened. We are published, everything is published without redaction on the Office of Public Accountability's website. So we are recorded with Facebook Live, so they have access to it. But I think you're right that we can't expect that everybody knows how to do that nor has the time to do it to listen to the entire meeting just for their case. So I think as soon as this meeting is over, this hearing is over, I will take steps to make sure that with the notification that now simply says the other, the physician will have 30 days, we will outline the steps that are taken so that that person can understand what to expect. It unfortunately does at times take a long time, usually not, but it does. And I think that people need to be informed of that. So that if we tell them that it can take a long time if we need off-island resources and experts, which we do our best not to do, but when we do have to do that, they need to understand that that can then add months to the process. But that doesn't mean that we can't keep them informed. I think the biggest failure has been communication with the complainants. We do a pretty good job of it, but that's not really good enough again. We will, we will do better and learn along the way. And what you mentioned today will stimulate that. So the transparency is there in a sense that everything is published. There's no hidden agenda. We don't have closed-door sessions. We don't have executive session at all. So everything is there to be scrutinized. But I think we could take one step further and notify the complainants in a more thorough manner as to what they should expect.
Appreciate your response to my question. And I think it's just an all fairness to the members of the community and certainly to the physicians as well. Because if you're in a position and, you know, your board determines that the physician did not do anything wrong, I mean, you know, just the mere allegation. And if that's allowed to hang there for a while, then that also hurts the reputation of that doctor. And it's human nature. It's human nature to always believe the worst. Sometimes believing the best is challenging. But boy, when someone says something bad, that spreads like wildfire and that certainly could hurt that physician's reputation and certainly their ability to practice. So I think it, by improving those standards that you're recommending as well, and that's been brought forth today, I think it's in the interest of everyone involved. So I certainly appreciate you responding to my, to my question and I wish you well in your reappointment. Appreciate the fact, I know you're a very busy individual, as all of you that serve in the medical profession are, to be willing to step forward and continue to provide your services to the community. So with that, Madam Speaker, I have no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Brown, Senator Brown. Dr. Berg, can I just clarify one more thing? So on your packet, like the resume portion, it includes that you've been the chairperson since 2017 to present. Can I confirm that you were appointed since 2015? So that's about 10 years now?
Apologies, I was appointed to the board and I don't have the directory in front of me, but I'll do, give you my answer to the best of my recollection. Appointed to the board in 2015, I declined the initial appointments to be the chair. So that would have made it 2017, I believe is correct because it was two years in before I was willing to accept the vote. It was twice, I think, voted and I declined both times until I felt comfortable in the position.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, I want to put then in your record, 2015, appointed first. Okay, and then chair, chair since 2017. All right, thank you. And again, I think we've heard from everybody here to testify and from you as well, unless you want to add any other additional statements, Dr. Berg?
No, ma'am, I just thank you for allowing me the chance to present my testimony.
All right, well, I appreciate your willingness to serve again and to lead the next chairperson or to assist them in a transition. There are rules that there, no board member can serve more than three consecutive. I believe this will be your third consecutive, so this will be a limit, I guess. But I do, I am very grateful.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I'm definitely going to use this to help someone carry on the role that we have federally and to continue to work on transparency. I can't say that I, like I said, I have been perfect. But, and I think the legislature has played their role in pushing us to work faster. And to do that, I needed to free up time and that's why the FCVS has made a huge role. I'll continue to do that, but most importantly, I'll work towards new leadership. That's my biggest goal, is to get in new leadership who can take over and represent our voice extremely well on a national level and locally, of course.
Again, thank you, Dr. Berg. And thank you to those who submitted testimony on behalf of Dr. Berg and came here personally to do that as well. I very much appreciate that. And Dr. Berg, of course, I very much appreciate your service to Guam in this capacity. And as you said earlier, it's not an easy capacity. And I do recognize the efficiencies that you've brought to some of the processing, that HPLO continues to face some challenges and that we can all work together, all the different boards, to improve HPLO's ability to service the, like, 12 boards that they do serve. And, but I very much appreciate your ability to help our community. And I want to encourage you to continue to do that and know that your work is recognized in screening for the safety of the patients of Guam, enforcing parameters for safety for people in Guam. We have no other way to do that. There really is no other way. It's the complaints by, by patients and we have to take them seriously or we will have absolutely no other way to really take care of them except through this board in large part. So I very much appreciate your willingness to continue to serve. And thank you again for all your testimony and your service. Sisus Massey to all of you. There being no further testimony, we will consider the reappointment of Nathaniel B. Berg, MD, to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners for a term of four years from the date of confirmation, as duly heard. This public hearing is now adjourned. The time is about 11:00 a.m. Sisus Massey.